Due to technical difficulties, the first portion of this meeting is unavailable. We apologize for the inconvenience.
You get a deep snow of two feet and you can't back over?
Yeah, that's that's on the upper.
That's on Fairlane.
Fairlane.
Which would be.
The lower road.
Correct.
That that was built as a drive. It's a class three road.
Is it class? Well, it's barely wide enough for my car.
I go there.
Right.
I have a little bit of hills.
Right.
And we plow it. Class three road.
We plow.
We plow class three.
Three roads.
Not four.
And it's it is gravel. Uh. Being the need to put a tandem in there because the tandem has sand, small truck has the salt.
Right.
Um.
It isn't.
And then the spurs up above that, uh, same thing. You got a four-way intersection just up from Fairlane. Trying to get around there, I've got multiple pictures at the garage of years past of a truck in the ditch or in the in the ditch at the intersection trying to get around the turn. And we have we have giant stones, thirty-six, forty-eight inch stones marking the head of the culvert at that four-way intersection. Uh, it it's still, you you can't make the swing. You know, if you've ever pulled a truck in a trailer, you know, you have to you have to take a little extra swing to get into something. It's still thinking tight that it it's. You know, we're doing a ten-point turn to try to get in there and that's with sliding and tearing, digging in because it doesn't typically freeze. Um, so that would be my other thoughts. As far as, like I said, the main road going up into there. It's paved, that's that's not an issue where, you know. I have no problem doing that. We obviously will do what we have to do, but I I really think we should consider these ones very strongly.
And you don't have the smaller truck, the three and a half yard?
So we tried with the Dodge last year.
Yeah.
Uh, when Gary got done salting, we had him actually dump dump the remainder of the stall out and put gravel in it and try to do some of these small places. But the spinner, the way that the setup is on that truck, it throws it into the ditch. So you you you, yeah, you're it's designed for a two-lane road, not for a a bill pass.
It's a one lane, not not quite a go pass, the one lane.
Very close.
One lane.
Yeah.
All right. What's the other one? Is it Ridgeview North? Or Fressy?
Ridgeview North, where, yup. Where Frank Fressy lives is Ridgeview North. And then the one up, um, next to that, on the other side of Lakeview is Ridgeview South. So those would be the three off of that road. Um, more specifically, the top one on that list of those three would be Fairlane. Uh, the risk just isn't really. It's it's pretty.
Yeah. I will remind the board, I mean, I think you were the only one on the board, but the, um, the one where Simpowskis live, this board discontinued that road.
Yup.
Thousand fifteen, maybe?
Maybe sixteen, yeah. Fifteen, sixteen. Um, these are class three roads. We would have to take a site visit and come back and and, uh, discuss changing them to class four roads.
This is when you said.
We would still maintain the class four roads, but we just wouldn't plow them.
That's it. Those paths. I mean, we would have to, we would, the board would have to consider class four versus discontinue um versus, you know, trail.
Yeah, but they don't really meet the criteria for class four roads as far as everything else, right? Don't they?
I don't know without without looking at them.
Yeah, I'd like to go visit. I mean, I think I've been to.
I'm happy to go. When time.
Well, the thing is, is we have to do this as a board. Yeah. We we don't grow up individually. We go, we warn it.
Well, I mean, if you if if you get to that point, you'd have to notify the adjoining landowners on much like we had, um, for the Ames Owl Road. You know, you have to notify the adjoining landowners, um, and then if you want to do more formal, there's no nothing that would preclude like you from driving up there or you from driving up there, but if you have a quorum, then that's a.
A quorum, that's what I was trying to allude to. Yeah. Yeah, we have to follow that whole route, correct, Paul?
Yeah. Go ahead, yeah.
So what 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 do you think? How should we start this?
I mean, I think if you guys want to look at the roads individually or otherwise, I just don't have a quorum when you go there, otherwise it's a public meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Georgetown Road. Where Alan lives.
Right, so the one on Georgetown Road. If you look at that on on the printout there. Now, I'm not sure about the map that Paul has, that would be the best one to go, but this is done off of Google Maps. There's, um, Kevin has to plow that short little jump. It's one, it's a driveway with a handicap ramp and it's on the plow discharge side of of the driveway.
Yeah.
So by doing that, we're actually also burying the person in. But if you look at maps, that's, there's no road, street, lane, it it's unidentified. It shows up just like everybody else's driveway.
It looks like a drive.
So, um, unless Paul has something different on that map.
Can you look up Georgetown, I love it, Alan? Right? I I deliver this.
Yeah.
Um, you can live right there too with meals on wheels.
Yeah, so what Kevin does is he goes to the end of Griffin Tar Turnaround with the casket in mind. And on his way back, because it's a right-hand turn, um, he hits that, he he goes in, pushes the snow in, leaves it there, unfortunately, there's like, so there's not a better way to do it because you're discharging everything to the right.
You'll go beyond, beyond the foots out.
Uh, Flanders, I believe.
Yeah. Has a gate.
Yeah. Um, and then he has to back out, there's absolutely nowhere to turn around in there. And I I just showed Alan one last week.
He could back in.
Right.
I can see, well, you're nice. You seen those trucks? And then one?
I'd be really surprised if this one is even a road. I think it's some.
I think it's a drive.
What I what I was told, and I've never verified this through the land records, is that they reconfigured the road there at some point and the predecessors to Mr. Allen, they made some sort of agreement, whether it's by deed or otherwise, that if you let us move the road, then we'll continue to maintain this portion of the road that's now your driveway.
Yeah.
That's what I was told historically happened about whether or not.
It is, it is just a. Well, we have to find out if that's if that's the case first.
That's so short, you know, that it's not. Um, that's not as critical as I would say Lennox or or Fairlane. Um, however, it it still has a backing out of there onto a road blind where you can tandem dump truck it in a snowstorm or ice storm or or whatever, you know? Um. Yeah. And then I have one more on the list.
No thanks.
As like there there's two options there, so there there's two houses once you turn onto that road. There's a house almost immediately on the left and then you go up and around. And there's a house on which would also be on the left-hand side and then we turn around in his yard. Um.
Isn't that Pannies?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure, the ownership was transferred two years ago. Then you're.
So did you go in this way? You go in this way? You go in this way?
So we we go to the end of Jones, we come, we turn around, we come back, see this is a triangle or lot right there, so we have to plow up in, go around the house, turn around in his driveway yard area, it's all the yard. Uh, again, you're doing another ten, twelve-point turn, whatever. And he's actually moved his garden back into where we turned around further, which is fenced in, so we've lost even more room with that. And then you have to raise your wing up to get by the house without actually putting the wing into the corner of the house. But I'm not trying to be funny about it or anything, but you know, legitimately, this is, um.
Chucks are big.
They are. Yeah, I just.
They used to be small.
Yeah, so two things, I I'm not looking to do this out of laziness. Uh, and just for anybody that doesn't know, is in education, we did not have tandems when we started doing these roads. We had smaller trucks that turned a lot easier. Now we have big trucks. They last longer, they they go in some amazing places, but they're just not meant to turn on these sharp, sharp turns. Um, and I don't believe that the problem is the tandems. As times have evolved, the tandems are definitely necessity for for what we do ninety percent of the time.
Efficiency.
Yeah, exactly.
Can we, can you guys kind of get to some of these roads before and take a peek at them before our next meeting on August fourteenth? If we can discuss. I know all these roads except the Maslight. Except the Maslight? Yeah, I need to look. Alan, do you know them all except Maslight?
I can hold.
And you shall?
Well, it's two, well, I know this one sort of, but I want to go into those two, so I'll go to those two.
Yeah, if if you do want, I I'm willing to take there not as a meeting, but just so you have an understanding of how we have to do it with the truck, because what you drive and then do in your car is completely different from what you have to do on the truck.
Let's see if we can get to them individually before our next meeting on August fourteenth and we'll bring it back. We'll get it on the agenda, bring it back and see where we go from there. So how about like your village truck? Would that be suitable? In these spots?
Probably that size truck.
Yes, that's probably the same thing.
More reasonable.
Right.
If you had some sort of a center discharge for the sander. The sanders are all.
Hope the same though. If they got something the same.
You could go help them with your shovel, get in the back and shovel the sand out.
Forty years.
Yeah, like I said, we did try it, we had Gary try it, we had him dump out the salt and put sand in it and try to do that just to for ease of movement, but you you're literally throwing all your material in the ditch. So. Um.
It was a special trip up these back roads with one truck to do one section a hundred yards. Those hours of work to bring another truck to some of these places.
Yeah, efficiency wise, um, that's a great point, you know, how how would we do that? You know, we're looking at, we're looking at, uh, three and a half hours on a decent day, you know, a couple inch storm or whatever. Now, if we're on a major snowstorm, it may take us five hours to get around all. That's all four trucks going around all roads simultaneously. It 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 can take you four, five hours.
Mm-hmm.
Um, especially in an ice storm.
Yeah, ice storms.
That's one trip around everything in Polton.
All right. You have a question?
Yeah, um, I don't have an opinion either way, I'm just wondering, is there any kind of liability issue, um, you know, with like homeowners insurance or anything, like if we change roads from class three to class four and now that person can't get out? Uh, if there's like a fire emergency or medical emergency or or whatever, is that something that considered? I know it doesn't sound like a lot of people are going to be affected by this, but but they could just be branded or they or they have to get a super four-wheel driver? I don't, I'm.
So I can't answer the legality portion of that as far as the homeowners and stuff. But I will tell you from the fire and EMS side of things, um, if they call us and let us know that there's a spot that they are going to need help with, we're going to help them. That's that's basically the number one priorities, you know? That it's an emergency situation, they're, you know, it's Polton inspired department, we're the highway department, so we're going to work hand in hand to get them where they need to go. We've done in the past and we'll continue to do it in the future for sure. Um, whether it's one of our regular roads or just some place in the town of Polton that they need access to, we'll find a way to make it happen, so. Uh, as far as the legal portion of that, you know.
I I can't, I can't comment.
But you want to?
Not wanting to, because there's no.
Right.
That's something I don't.
Well, it's one thing I'm worried about.
Okay.
But like you're doing a seventy-two point turn, it's not great either, so.
Yeah. Some of them are really very dangerous and those trucks. Extremely dangerous.
Can I ask a question about if you're changing, um, if you're considering changing a road from class three to class four? Um, I remember what the select board went through at Tom Roy Place, which was a class four, I believe, to begin with. And you had someone there who was explaining that in order to keep it a class four road, you would have to meet all these new act two fifty requirements. So if you decide to go for some of these roads from class three to class four, I think you might be under those restrictions too. And I know that's very costly to upgrade the road to those requirements.
Yeah, what you're referring to is the MRGP standards.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Let's see if we can, yeah.
Sorry, I have an unrelated roads question, is it okay? If you want, I can, I can wait.
Yeah, let's see if if there's anything else. Is that, is that?
No, I I'm I'm good, that's, uh, everything current. So if anybody has any questions here.
Let's see if we can get there individually before the fourteenth. Go ahead.
Okay, I live, um, you know, if you're going north on Beaman Street out of town and you see the factory building that's up on the the big brick building that's up on the right as you're going out, there's a house up there and it's not in the village and that's where I live. So I'm responsible for that whole embankment as you go past that where it looks like there's been some deadwood branches come down recently.
Is that the old piano factory?
Yeah.
Okay. Right down, down, down here.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to talk to my bird.
It's okay, so Route North, I mean Route Thirty North.
Yup, okay.
Just past that big brick building on the right, there's, you see embankment that steeds. There's a house up there and that's where I live.
Okay.
So I think there's been some big deadwood branches come down that look like they got shoved into the ditch. And it's kind of dangerous for me to deal with it. And I'm just curious if road crew can help with that or if I just need to, like, you know, somebody to help me with it or or what.
So.
That'd be the state of Vermont.
Yeah. That'd be the. Castle.
Is is it, is it, is it on the road or are you driving?
It's on the, it's on Thirty.
On Thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be V-Trans.
Because it's a big steep embankment that's wooded and then I'm up in front of that. Yeah. Okay. I know, I just want to take care of it because, you know, it's kind of nice trees down there too.
That'd be Castleton.
More stuff.
You know, right before you get to the Four Corners, there'd be the V-Trans grounds right there.
Is it, is it, like, I should deal with them or I should, like?
I would ask them first before you just get out into Thirty, there was.
Yeah.
There was an accident up just up the road from me last year where somebody was collecting sap and their truck got smashed into.
Right, right, I know, okay.
Maybe you can give Kim the who she should help you?
Yeah, I can, I'll set you up with a contact.
Okay.
Um. And do that, and if they can't do it or whatever, get back, I'll after them, you know, after I'll give you my information or whatever. And, um, if if they, V-Trans can't help you out or whatever, I can at least give you a couple of phones or something to just put out for a little bit of visibility or something.
I'm friends with Andy too, that works with you.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Any other questions? John?
We, we, I'm sorry, I did something else. Um, we had received a complaint about high road being in extremely bad shape. And, um, that got created. Top of Upper Road, self-polling, thirty-one. Turn left to Upper and then you continue up towards Ruby Road and then, uh, from from the Ruby Upper Intersection, everything south of that is high road. And it goes up, it's paved for a while, and then at the top of the hill, it turns, it transitions to gravel. We added material to that and then I created that today, so that should be in pretty good shape for a while. We also did, uh, new customer today and added some more material to Jones Road as well.
You know, the fringes. Those roads are on the outer fringes of Polton.
Yeah.
How's our, how's our gravel? We still have a lot of?
We have a good stockpile there and, uh, the hopefully if we can get hauling good tomorrow, I will request to start refilling our stockpile ASAP as well. Keep, keep more coming in. We're starting to get the roads kind of slowly built up to where they're, you know, where they're at or above the shoulder of the road at this point.
Pretty much.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, anything else? Good. Thank you, Joel.
You're welcome.
You don't have to stay if you don't want. Um, I'm.
I just have a note here, I'd like to set a special meeting to set the tax rate, um.
Okay, if it's a two hundred two. There is that one, Joel. Joel, there is that one.
Either this Thursday or next Thursday.
This Thursday, next Thursday, time and name, but this Thursday, I'm good. Twenty-seven. How long does it take to?
Um, it shouldn't take too long, um, less than an hour, I would say.
We talking four o'clock, six o'clock?
Um. Leave it up to you guys.
You can come in anytime, whatever time anybody, everybody can get here.
I could do four just so I can get done and go to camp.
Okay, so you want to say Thursday?
You're gonna say four?
I can do three.
You make embark at four?
Four o'clock. Twenty-seventh.
Thanks.
Um, I failed to mention last, in our last meeting, I guess it was two meetings ago now, that, um, I had some volunteers helping me with the Fourth of July, including Mary Sue Reed, so thank you for your help and.
And Margaret.
And Margaret helped pick up the day after.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Um, and of course Sarah, you did a great job with organizing everything. Um. I failed to mention that, so I apologize.
I heard some, lots of good things, I think they have to do a couple cards that we, the people. There's good things, there are a lot of volunteers.
Mm-hmm.
For sure.
Um. Mark wanted to talk about the two estimates.
Right. You got. If we. Who was in somewhere?
No.
Not in Dennis Smith's. I'm scared. Last time we talked about it, you said you wanted to follow up on something.
There's one with Don Smith, I haven't had a chance, I just had questions about, you know, EDA compliance and things of that nature. Um, because you would need a fairly long ramp, I think, if you want to make that EDA compliant.
There's two steps there now.
I think it's one, one foot per one inch rise.
Yeah. So you have fourteen inches. That'd be fourteen-foot ramp. It's all four.
Four feet, six inches long. So I I.
Does it have to be EDA compliant? I'm just jumping skips.
I mean, I would be, I I think it would be.
I wouldn't want to step, I wouldn't want to test it, test the waters on that.
No, I'm gonna do it, right?
Yes.
I mean, I don't know, I mean.
We had more than one, that's why I just done it.
That's the only one that we have for that. I would almost think about trying to put it on the other side. Um, because there's two sides to that machine, but they only use one side.
We could put a ramp on the other side and you could come up that way.
So I think we'd have to take closer look at that, and then you had met with Wild Willy.
Yeah, Bill Lyle. There are four, four dumpster boxes up there that need to be extremely well. I guess that's the state law.
Law. That's more, I think it's more insurance, yeah, insurance, safety.
Right, the railings up there are fairly beat up. They've been plowed into, they've been hit from the back over. And, uh, Bill came up with the estimate of twelve thousand two hundred and sixty. There's ten thousand dollars, they should, they should be ten thousand dollars fine.
Should be what?
Ten thousand dollars, alright.
So he's given a ten thousand dollar discount.
What railings are we talking about?
Um. Uh, four railings. Four railings, right. To include ninety-seven feet of garden. Ninety-seven feet manufactured.
So where are they gonna go?
And sold.
Where are they gonna go?
In front of the dumpsters where you can access it. Right.
So the ones in there, we throw bags in, they're in good shape, that what you're saying?
Right, the the main squisher is actually still functional, but all the other, the two other ones are not in good shape at all. The full gross for the furniture dumpster. Right. And the, um, the the construction, the demo dumpster. Right.
So, okay, I don't mean to be stupid about it, but, okay, so here's a dumpster, because I go there all the time.
Right.
What, what, if I'm looking at it, what is it, what is it gonna be?
It's going to be a railing, probably. That's gonna be a certain height for the insurance company.
So this is something new we're adding to?
Well, we place.
But it's not there now, was it there about one time ago?
Yes, it was there, probably starting about twenty years ago.
So we're being that's what I'm saying.
I mean, the one in front of the, I mean, that's because some waste is is there, so.
Right, that one's still there.
Still functional.
And there used to be one in front of the other dumpsters.
Right.
It's more of a solid thing, or sort of top railing, that's there, it's set upright, it's every.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I I mentioned.
Does that have to be handmade and that my word?
Yeah, it's, and steel is just going through the roof.
That's something we have to do, I mean, is it?
I mean, insurance company.
So you don't fall in, I'm assuming if someone goes up, you're gonna fall in.
That'll dump, dumps does it definitely.
I haven't fallen in twenty years, but I get what you're saying.
I'd be so.
This is something with balusters every four inches apart.
I honestly don't know that. So are you saying that's twelve thousand two hundred and sixteen, he's giving us a? Sixty. Ten thousand? He said, he said there's not a penny, penny of money left in this to cut. Because it's, he's already donated ten thousand dollars.
Is he like giving us a picture of what it's, what it's gonna look like or how high and?
He has a workbook, he he said.
Is a what?
He has a workbook, a worksheet of it, which I did not see.
Okay, I would like to see that first, like how high, what does it look like? I'm having, I'm gonna visualize what it's gonna look like.
Right, that does not say.
Yeah, that doesn't tell me.
Right.
Yeah. So I can have a visual what it's gonna look like in the book there.
Okay, okay, let's get that on the agenda for our next meeting. I I can go back to see, see what he.
So we can see what it's gonna look like, where they're gonna be located.
We'll get them both on the agenda for the next meeting. Now, Rick is our other, um, select board member. He's out for medical right now and hopefully he'll be back soon. But he's gonna stay with us at this point. Anything else, Paul?
Um, not at the moment, no.
Sarah?
Um, I think, so I I was hoping to have the quarterly, um, data that I've been presenting to the select board done for tonight, but I wasn't quite finished with it, so at your next meeting, I will have that for, um, second quarter of twenty twenty-three. Um, the Borax signs, the wayfinding signs that we have been working on are done and I'm going to pick them up tomorrow, so, um, Alan, Joel, Paul and I went out to locate them several months ago and will be up in the next few weeks as we can get them installed, so, um, that'll be great. Um, and I think the only other thing I want to share with the board tonight is that, um, I have heard from a couple of new businesses that are considering relocating in Polton. I have heard from a couple of new businesses that are considering relocating in Poltony. Uh, one of which is looking for office space, some of which there is still available in the village. And so I gave them that information. The other is a more established business that is considering coming, moving to Poltony and called looking for assistance with any kind of business incentives or grants. So I think, you know, my point to the select board would be that aside from grants, I don't really have a lot to offer to someone who is in this position aside from coming to the board with tax stabilization. Um, there is a revolving loan fund that's available through Cedar, but some towns have their own funds. Um, it may be that PDRC considers doing that in coming years, but in this situation, that would be applicable because it's not in the designated downtown. So just, I may be coming back to the select board in a few months asking for, asking for your opinion on adding more business development incentives that we could offer to other businesses, so just wanting to be aware of that. Grants for privately owned businesses are not as easy to come by at this point. There needs to be a, a clear, clear representation of how many new jobs that business would add. There is one loan program that's open still for, Community Recovery and Repitalization Program is open to private businesses, but those funds are drying up. I think they're in the fourth round. Um, so that's it. There's.
Well, something like that, is that something we should look at, like, towards budgeting time?
Um, possibly, yeah, I mean, I think that could be resolved. I don't know that a revolving loan fund is the right thing for the town at this point. Um, it may be for the designated downtown if PDRC decides to go that route. Um, but tax stabilization, possibly. That's a very common tool for business, business development. And, um, yeah, any other policies that we could?
Any idea how large the second business is?
Large in terms of?
Like, people hiring or?
Jobs.
Jobs or?
Um. I don't know for sure. If I had to guess, I'd say somewhere around, you know, fifteen to twenty.
Hmm, yeah, good size.
Yeah. But they're looking for tools and the conversation was, there's other communities that are looking for, you know, we're being, we're being courted by other communities that are offering X, Y, and Z. What can, what can Poltony offer me? Um, and I am somewhat limited in what's established in terms of the community. So, you know, you can hustle grants, you can look for, you can kind of be savvy in the way that you're looking for funding for that, but the town itself doesn't have those, those incentives in place yet.
But tax stabilization could be one way.
It could be. And we've talked about that.
Okay. Do you keep us posted?
Okay, yeah, I love, I think that's it, but I'll be at your next meeting with more. We can talk a little bit further about some of the other projects that I'm working on.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Sarah?
Me too. Thanks for helping out.
Absolutely. I'm filling in for Nisha.
Trump and Regional Planning Commission?
Uh, so the RPC hasn't met since the last meeting where they had their FY twenty-four work plan and budget. Um, the Regional Board hasn't met. And the TAC met and just kind of went over micro transit, which was, I, I, I didn't see a lot of ways that it applied to Poltony yet, particularly with the Better Connections planning that we're doing. So I think that report from the Town to Trails Better Connections Project will probably have a lot more related to transportation, so it's just an educational type thing.
Okay. Um, that's it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Public comments and concerns?
There is one thing, Paul. Paul, we have any empty on our side?
Um, no.
Any public comments and concerns tonight, here in Sioux?
Uh, any additional information on Highway Garage?
Not at this time. I, there, there are some programs related to buildings that I think I'll be more prepared to talk about next week. But not at this time. I'm wrapping up a few projects and able to focus on that more.
Who's still waiting for the engineer architect anyways, right? To get back to us about that area?
Um, yeah, the, the.
Space.
Our present.
Okay, any other, yes?
I thought, oh, do you want? I had heard some talk about changes at Poltony Rescue Squad. Are you aware of any changes that have been going?
Those to me.
Well, yeah, they have changed the, there's now an interim director there. Um, but I haven't had any conversations with them about it yet. So that's the only change I'm aware of. Is that what you're referring to?
I don't, well, I don't, I don't know. I just had heard there were changes.
Um, what do you mean by, what do you mean by changes? Do you know?
I heard there were staff changes.
Yeah, see, we don't.
Katrina's no longer the, is no longer the director, she's now an interim director.
See, Mary, Mary Sue, we don't, that's an LLC, isn't it an LLC? They have their own board. We, alls we do is put them in our budget. We, we don't know what they do when they first do.
Do you, do you require a certain level of service from them for the town and village? In your budget? Because if you're giving them money, you expect something in return, so is?
Well, we expect them to.
It's of cause.
Yeah, when they get called to come into the village or town to take a call. What do you mean?
I, I mean, if you, if you find out that there's changes going on, wouldn't you want to know if that's going to impact service being provided to the town and village?
Um.
I mean, they're not going to come out and say to you, I mean, it's, it's something I think.
Were you asking us to?
I haven't had the conversation with them. They emailed me last Thursday and I haven't had a conversation with them about it yet.
But you're going to have some sort of a talk just to find out?
Yes.
Is any impact? I, that's, that's my concern. I do want to make sure that.
This is all news to me and I don't know any of the other board members. I knew that, I just heard rumors, but rumors are rumors and I.
Well, that's, and again, it's something worth looking into just to make sure that we're providing with active services in town, so. But I know they've been looking for EMTs. I don't know.
Yes, yes.
How that's.
They are pretty short-staffed, yes, we can have that.
Yes, that we do know.
Okay, and let's see. I'm getting hoarse again. Um, has there been any movement on regenerative landholdings plans for the former GMC campus? That's been, I haven't heard anything.
We've had discussions in executive session about it.
Okay.
And we have it on the agenda to go into executive session again for that contractual matter and one other contractual matter.
Okay. I had a meeting with the campus last week as well.
Okay.
And the tax stabilization is the highest priority at this time.
Yes.
Okay, and I just have an announcement. Eighty-eighth Annual East Poltony Day is happening on August twelfth from nine to three on East Poltony Green. So come support your historical society and vendors in town and see some good entertainment.
I think the band you got is amazing.
Yeah, it is, it's amazing. It's absolutely amazing.
Great, one more question?
I'm done.
Okay.
I, I just kind of had a question more, just wanted some information. I know there's been some, some discussion because of all the stuff that happened last month or two months ago now with adding to our police force or, I don't know the right terms. Um, I know it's kind of been in executive session, but just, and even just hypothetically or theoretically, if we decided to expand our police force, would the public have a say or would it just kind of happen? Then the responsibility is on you guys. I'm just wondering if there are next steps for that.
So the, the Town and Poltony Charter specifically gives the select board the authority to determine the type of police, law enforcement coverage that we have in the town. Um, the boards had some discussions about what direction that should change, if any. Um, during last budgeting session, the board discussed uh, whether or not that, what we have now should change and what that would look like. Um, so it's an ongoing conversation that the board has been having. Um. And I, I'll just say personally, from what I heard from the, the meeting that we had at the firehouse, uh, from the sheriff, from the deputy sheriff and from the constable, um, and I'm only saying my personal opinion, uh, they, they all said our hands are kind of tied, so I, you know, I question what, what can change to make police coverage better? If you have more officers, is that, is that better? Is more presence simply better? So I, I don't know. I mean, that's, that's something I think the board is discussing.
But Paul, if we said we were getting a police force or anything like that in Poltony, that would go to the voters. That would be something.
No, I didn't say. By the charter, this, the select board does.
If the tax goes up with the tax.
Well, I mean, I mean, if.
That's what people, that's what people.
I mean, yeah, the budget would have to be approved by the voter.
Right, which means your budget would go up because you would get.
So indirectly more.
Yeah, because people ask it, but it costs more in taxes if you have your own police. Loser in here, yes.
Well, of course it would, yeah, and then also everyone would get speeding tickets, not me.
Now you're always walking.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, I think it's an ongoing conversation.
It is an ongoing conversation and it's something that would have to be budgeted. The board would figure out what they would need and to Cheryl's point, it would go into the budget and put it on the taxpayer.
Thank you.
What do you feel about?
Um.
Just curious.
I, I think that if there were more police, they would have to justify their presence and a lot more people would be getting tickets for things that are like non, non-victims, non-violence. You know, like the people who always get popped for making that right turn on Main. Just kind of those things that it's like, yeah, you're jaywalking, you know, like, I'm just worried about that.
You can't have both ways. That's what people want to do. I don't want to get pulled over, but I want you to do this, so it's a fine line.
I don't think we need more, I don't think we need more presence, honestly, I think that's me and, but that's just my opinion. Yeah, I think for what we have and, you know, even like a, a new mom, I think the rescue squad is, that's what's important is to get sick people to the hospitals. But, you know, maybe some kind of psychology or psychologist for domestic abuse stuff, because that's something where you don't necessarily need police who have to give tickets. You can have like, but, but domestic abuse incidences are very serious, very dangerous. So, you know, maybe thinking about it like that, but just a guy who's hanging out catching speeders by Kim's house, I don't think, I don't think we need that. I mean, yeah, I'd rather not be.
Okay. Any other comments or concerns? Nobody's got their hands up. All right. Do I hear a motion to sign the board orders?
I would make the motion to sign the board orders.
Wait a second. Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. We have to go into executive session for two contractual issues. So tonight, we'll be going in right now to executive session.
Pursuant to one VSA, section three thirteen A one, I make the motion that this board finds that premature general public knowledge would clearly place the board or person involved in substantial disadvantage. Certain matters related to contracts were discussed outside of executive session. Pursuant to VSA, section three thirteen A one A, I make the motion to enter into executive session to discuss the contract matters.
Um, some questions by the board? All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carry.